Stand for the flag please. Minutes of the September 28th meeting, do we have a motion to approve those minutes?
Move.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion on those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills, do we have a motion to approve financial report?
So move, second.
In a second. Real quickly, I had a question in regards to, actually I had two questions. What project are we using Duffield on right now?
Road.
Road construction, okay, very good. And the other one was, the divine computing, was that, there was an order there, was that for equipment?
Computer.
Very good, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have presentations this evening from the Cecil County Health Department. Come on down, introduce yourself, know everyone who you are, and tell what we're gonna talk about.
Okay. First, I'd like to thank you all for allowing me to have the time to be on the agenda today. And I'd like to acknowledge law enforcement for being a part of our tobacco task force in Cecil County. Chief Matt Donnell, Lieutenant Allen, and Corporal Todd Creek were supposed to be here today, but unfortunately they had some illnesses and things going on and everything, but they didn't be here today. But they've been a very valuable part of our task force, and I just wanna acknowledge them. And so, what I'm here to talk about today is just to give some awareness about electronic smoking devices and talk a little bit about enforcement of tobacco with you. So, to begin with, electronic smoking devices are sometimes called ESDs, and that is what we're gonna take a look at, just a few slides to take a look at what's going on with ESDs. Okay? ESDs are battery-operated devices. ESDs allow the user to inhale an aerosol, which typically contains nicotine flavoring and other additives. ESDs have a wide design, and I tried to put a picture of some of the designs and different things that they come in. There are over 500 brands and 7,700 flavors. And some examples of the flavors there are, they come in cotton candy, strawberry, chocolate. And in 2013, in 2013 to 2014, 81 percent of current youth e-cigarette users cited the availability of these flavors as the primary reason for use, and that's why I'm sharing that with you. Okay, so, this graph, if you can take a look at, the green bars are the dollars and the red bar are youth usage. And this graph shows that the tobacco companies have increased their dollars of advertising, which has had a direct impact on youth, as you can see, the youth use of e-cigarettes increased corresponding to the advertising, and this is directly, as you can see that. This graph shows the rise throughout the nation for both middle school and high school use of e-cigarettes or electronic cigarettes, which is also known as ESD. And this is just showing you how it's increased with those dollars. So now what we're looking at is Cecil County. Headed Cecil County, Cecil County ranks fifth. We're almost tied with Lakota County. We have 10.3 percent of Cecil County middle school reporting e-cigarette use, and Lakota County has 10.4 percent, so we're almost tied with them at ranking fourth and fifth in the county. And that's out of all the counties in the state of Maryland. And now what I want to take a look at is high school, which is the next slide. Where, yeah. Cecil County ranked second out of all the counties in Maryland of high school students using e-cigarettes. And this is just something I just wanna make sure that you're aware of. If anybody ever wants these graphs or run any of that, that's fine, I'll be happy to send them to you. So, take a look at some of the risks for ESDs. We know that they contain a lot of chemicals and heavy metals. ESDs vapor is an aerosol full of nicotine heavy metals and cancer-causing chemicals. And it is not just water vapor, and that's what a lot of you think, it's just water vapor. We know there are cancer-causing chemicals such as formaldehyde, cetaldehyde, acrylon, and they have all been found in the aerosol, as well as heavy metals such as tin, lead, nickel, silver, aluminum, silicate, and chromium, all have been found in the aerosol as well.
Should we try another?
Yes. It looks like it skipped some slides. Shall I turn back up? It only skipped one? Okay. So, the slide that's missing talks about some chemicals, the other chemicals in ESDs. There's diethylguaycol, which is a component of antifreeze. We also have diaceto, which is a flavoring component that actually can cause irreversible lung damage, and it really does a lot of scarring to the small sacs, the air sacs in the lungs. And nicotine, as you know, it can cause all kinds of damage with adolescent brains. It interrupts the brain circuits and important connections that you need to make for attention, learning, making you more susceptible for addiction later on in life. And this is actually, what you're looking at is, they also have a risk of overheating and exploding, and this was a newsreel that ran in Howard County. And we don't have time to run it, but if you were to click on that link, you could actually watch the newsreel and just see how these explosions can be very large and very big. And we do have a lot, there are a lot of cases throughout the nation that have had overheating exploding. I know two cases here, one of them a high school student. So, this is just something that, you know, I just wanna make sure that everybody's aware of as well. Now, if you go to the next slide, they are actually doing something new with the e-cigarettes. It's called dripping, and it's a new dangerous way that's really gaining popularity. Basically, they disassemble it and put the drops directly onto the heating coil. And when they do that, the drops produce thicker clouds, a stronger nicotine burst, and more flavoring, and they get about twice as much of the cloud vapor. And the users will do this so they can have, they can perform unhealthy vape tricks such as, when they exhale the clouds, they can actually make shapes, and you see a picture right there. They can make tornadoes, they have dragons, they have all kinds of different ones, as you can see. And there's a lot of how-tos and Googles on, and how to do it on the internet, which makes it really popular. The problem is, is that when, when you have this increase, so, the FDA has shown that the chemicals like formaldehyde, which is a carcinogen, are actually higher when you're using dripping compared to the conventional use of e-cigarettes, as well as there's a stronger hint of nicotine, so that means there's gonna be more potential harm to the brain of an adolescent, as well as the dripping is gonna increase the flavoring, which will also increase the risk of having more irreversible lung damage. So I'm gonna stop here and see if anybody has any questions about that.
I have one. Do you think the ones without the nicotine in them, do they still have all the other chemicals in them?
That, that, that's a good question, and the answer is, they still have a lot of dangers and a lot of different things to it, and the ones without the nicotine, right now, the FDA is finding the ones without the nicotine actually had nicotine, and the ones that said that they didn't have any nicotine, that said they had nicotine, they were kind of diluting it so that they could say. So, there's really been no standard regulations until, just as you can see, a lot of new stuff is coming out this year where the FDA is actually checking and trying to standardize it, because pretty much the e-cigarette companies have been able to do stuff without having any types of balances and any standardization. So, my guess, my guess is, once the standardization is, and we have a little bit less, there might be less nicotine, but the other chemicals, a lot of that sometimes stem from the heating coils, well, actually, some of the metal comes off of the heating coil when it heats up and the voltage on the e-cigarette. And the higher the voltage, the more danger there is. So, the ones with the big batteries, you know, that's a problem. But, so it's a big concern, and if there's flavoring in it, there's a concern with that as well. And I, more than anybody, wanted it to be the answer for everybody, because one of the things I do is help people quit smoking, and I would love to give everybody the magic, the magic bullet and say, this is it, this is the thing that'll help you. But, right now, they're showing that, that it's not recommended as a method. They're still doing a lot of studies on it, and checking to see if maybe standardizing and different things are, but right now, we can't recommend that because of the dangers associated with it right now. I'm hoping that they'll be less.
Are we showing this presentation in our schools today?
I have knocked on those doors, and I am still waiting to find out.
Wow. And do we know, are they allowing e-cigarettes in schools? Are you allowed to have these vapors?
No, no. From what I understand, you can't have it. I do know that there was a case where there was a kid in school, it was not, it was not Cecil County. The kid in school was having smoking vape, put it on his desk, and the kid next to him, and it shot out and exploded and hurt them, and people lost their sight, vision, wherever it exploded, so that's the problem. Then there are other stuff associated with it. Because they really do think it's healthy, and focus on the water, a lot of them, because we've done a couple of focus groups with the kids here, and I was very interested to see what they thought. So we did that with North Bay, and the Cecil County schools there.
Can I add? Do you know why Cecil County is number two in the state, especially in high schools? Why the rate is so high?
And that's gonna be my question. Maybe you brought that up, Marito, because you went to middle school, you're not number two. Then when you go to the high school, you jump to number two, and we call them 20-foot counties.
I would love to have those answers for you, but don't have these answers as far as why. I do know that there's a lot of misconception among the youth about the safety of the cigarette. And that's one of the things. I do know it's also considered a dangerous symbol to have a fancy cigarette, and they cost hundreds of dollars, that's another one. Those are some of the things that are shared with me by everybody. But, as far as the information, I'm knocking on doors, so if anybody has a way to get any doors open for me, you know, no problem, give me a call, I'll be happy to share this. If you've had some graphic pictures, I did not bring today, because of the purpose.
So is this still considered better than a regular cigarette? Or are they now finding with everything in it, it's not?
Well, it depends, you know, with all the risks that I've shown you, and you know the risks with a regular cigarette, we don't have the risk of a regular cigarette exploding on somebody. We don't have the risk of not knowing nothing, the actual product and the liquid. There was also, e-cigarettes came with extra risks with pets and little ones getting, and actually eating the vials, and getting the, and it made the poison control. So there's a lot more risk. As far as tar levels, that's one of the things that, that's why it became, is that the tar levels have gone, but they're still doing the research on it. And I'd love to give you that research, but the FDA is actually, and the CDC is doing research right now, and I will share the results as soon as I know. So there's a part two, which is just a type of that enforcement. You can skip that. Okay.
This is regular cigarette.
This is regular, this, no, this is just, this is just enforcement for youth. So we're gonna talk about the ways that we look at enforcing, preventing youth to access tobacco products. And the slide that you're not seeing, I was really excited to show it to you. It was actually a picture of Congressman Michael Sinar, who came up with the Sinar Amendment, and everybody says, well, what's Sinar? Sinar's his last name, but I wanted to show, I wanted to show a picture of him. Anyway, it requires the states to enact and enforce laws prohibiting sales and distribution of tobacco products. And the states must, as part of this Sinar Amendment, they must conduct annual random inspections of compliance checks of retailer outlets for compliance checks to make sure that they're not selling to individuals under the age of 18. And you must maintain a non-compliance rate of less than 20 percent. That means we have to have the 80 percent in compliance, and we cannot get any higher than 20 percent of non-compliance rates. So when you take a look at the federal fiscal year FY15, because that's how they measure it, starting in June to July, what you're gonna see are the rates. In FY15, we were at 31 percent, that's for the state of Maryland, which exceeded our 20 percent of non-compliance rates that we were allowed. In FY16, we had brought it down, just in one fiscal year, to be in compliance, we were at 13.8 for the state of Maryland. And the reason that it's so important that we stay in compliance, not just because of the youth and all the different things that are associated with tobacco, but it actually is tied to our substance abuse prevention and treatment funds, and the state can lose about 40 percent of their funds if we don't stay in compliance. So that is why it's so important, and that's the way the amendment was formed. If you wanna take a look at Cecil County rates, these are just Cecil County. As you can see, we kind of zigzagged a lot, and the FY17, that's the latest one this year. I don't have the final from the Sinar, from the state. I did get a copy of the inspections, and this is what it looks like it's gonna be. It's gonna be about 25 percent non-compliance, because we, they did 12 inspections and we had three failures. So that comes out to 25 percent. And that's where, that's where I am now with the compliance rates, so. The next one. So what activities are we doing? We are collaborating with the Cecil County Liquor Board to educate vendors and show them how to properly ID check and make sure that they properly card for alcohol and tobacco. We are also, and we are, I have, I and myself have been visiting tobacco vendors and talking to each one of them personally, and making sure that they understand the laws, and looking at ways to help them meet the compliance checks. And local law enforcement will conduct tobacco compliance checks, and that's where a youth will attempt to buy, and law enforcement will see if they sell to a minor. And then, any repeat violations will get reported to the Regulatory Enforcement Division, which is at the Maryland Office of Comp Control. And some of the information, I don't know if that'll pop up or yet. Some of the information that, that we use, this is state-developed, and it's just really information designed for retailers to understand the importance of complying to tobacco and not selling to minors, and it also gives them the IDs. We also give them copies of the laws and all the different things that are going on, and they can ask all those things to me as well, and I give them, I give them all that information, and they have several contacts in different places where they can get the information and get educated as well. Next.
Do you have any questions?
Sure.
All the same laws, then, for e-cigarettes?
Yes, yes, they do. All the same rules apply. Before, it was a little bit different, like just past this year, that every, everything associated with e-cigarettes also applies as traditional tobacco to e-cigarettes. So, we just don't want anybody to get caught off guard. So, any questions? Okay, well, I just wanna thank you for your time and allowing me to speak, and if somebody has a question later on, can reach me. I did, I forgot my card, but I'm gonna give my contact information to Michelle here, and she will be able to put you in touch with me.
I have a question.
Yes.
You said there were 12 inspections, three failed, were three in Elton or outside?
They were, they were in Elton.
Oh my God.
They were. I know, I know who they are, but I've had a talk with them, so we're hopefully moving on. It is very hard being a vendor. A lot of these have high staff turnover, and there's just a lot of different components that go into it. So it is really kind of hard to put that on the vendors of trying to make sure that everything goes right. It does work better when there's like a scanning machine in the actual store, because then they don't have to do the calculation of the ID.
Sure. I have a question.
Sure.
Inhaling secondary cigarette smoke, it's a carcinogen. Inhaling this vapor, is it a carcinogen?
Yes ma'am, it is.
Thank you.
It comes with all the same breaths.
Okay, thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Lou, you were on.
Proclamation, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. A proclamation of the Mayor and Commissioner of the Town of Elton, proclaiming October 2017 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas annually, over 230,000 women in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer, and 40,000 will die from this disease. Whereas breast cancer affects both women and men, although most common cancers in women, thousands of men will also be diagnosed with invasive breast cancer each year. Whereas each October, our nation and international community is calling to heighten awareness of breast cancer to emphasize the life-saving message of early detection through outreach to education and screening programs. And whereas through research, advocates say significant advances have been made in the fight against breast cancer, including an increase in five-year relative survival rates for localized breast cancer. Now therefore, the Mayor and Commissioner of the Town of Elton hereby proclaim the month of October 2017 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Elton, and encourage all citizens to support research that will one day lead to the elimination of this insidious disease.
We have a motion to accept proclamation P-34-2017.
So move.
We have a motion in a second, any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Lou.
That side of mine has is ordinance 11, 2017. This was already introduced on September 20th and is subject to adoption this evening. This is the amendment to the Elton zoning ordinance, specifically Article 10, permissible uses. That will allow a facility with a Maryland Class 5 M production brewery license may be permitted with conditions in the C2, C3, TC zoning districts. Also, the permissible uses table will be amended to say, a restaurant with a Maryland Class 6 M pub brewery license may be permitted with conditions in the C2, C3, and TC zoning districts. Article 12 indicates that a production brewery, a facility with a Maryland Class 5 M production brewery license and Maryland Class 6 M pub brewery license may be permitted in C2, C3, TC zones, subject to the following conditions. A production brewery and or pub brewery are required to comply with Title 13, Section 11, Chapter 13, 12, pre-treatment of industrial waste coded the Town of Elton. I would recommend the board adopt this, this one tonight.
We have a motion to approve ordinance 11-2017, it's being presented for adoption. A motion in a second, any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
That's going to go ahead.
Very good. We have a workshop coming up on next Wednesday with the accepted or adopted new ordinance Could we get at that workshop, Michelle, I know Lou's not gonna be here for the workshop next week, but could we get maybe Jason from Severn Trent, and hopefully he could educate us a little bit more on these solids that are being produced from possibly, for what he would know, to help educate this board? This is a mean.
For the brewery. We have BODs and total suspended solids, all of the biggest issues there. He can explain the limitations on what they are.
I think that would be important for us to know. We've got, I know one brewery, hopefully on its way, and we might have a second one on its way, a larger scale and a smaller scale, and I think it's very, very important for us to understand the impact. Everything I'm reading, I think that we might be blowing this impact out a little bit further than what we think, but I wanna hear it from them also. I appreciate that. Wanted everyone to know, I attended the Elk Landing Beer Tasting Festival. How do you figure that? It was a wonderful time, they had the Elk Landing on Friday. It was a great event, and whether it's a beer tasting or an event surrounded by Elk Landing, I would welcome anyone to come to that venue. What a great job that committee has done at that facility, and it's something well worth everyone from the Town of Elton to take a look at that site. Great job down there. Mary Jo, I'm gonna take a blow your thunder. We have, I think if everyone's been watching, we've been getting some scarecrow sightings on Main Street. I think we're gonna have close to 25 within, hopefully by the next, by the end of the week, I think we're up to maybe six, maybe seven as of this evening, and it's a wonderful way to decorate our light bowls. I'm actually extremely excited about that, and I think this is something we can carry, carry through, not only for Halloween, but maybe even for Christmas, or maybe even Thanksgiving, maybe into next year, Fourth of July, come up with a theme. I think it's something we could do all the time to keep some excitement in downtown. But it's, I love the scarecrows, I love them. I wanted to mention that this Saturday, we have the Arts Festival in downtown Elton. It's gonna be in the parking lot, behind, right off of North Street, so hopefully everyone can come and enjoy the Arts Festival. It's an all-day event, and it's kid-friendly, so it'd be a great event to bring the children With that, I wanted to mention the Halloween Parade for the Town of Elton is on October 27th, Friday night, October 27th. Hopefully, everyone will be there for the Halloween Parade. And trick-or-treat, as it always is, it falls on October 31st, but we get asked all the time, what night's trick-or-treating gonna be? But it's October 31st, and the Town of Elton is gonna recognize it from 6 o'clock to 8 o'clock on the 31st. With that, that's all I have this evening. Mary Jo, would you like to take a floor?
Sure. I will add on to the scarecrows, because they are all gonna be out before First Friday. This Friday is First Friday. It's one of our barge or First Fridays. Our space on Main has a called Empty Bowls. They've been making bowls all year long, and you can purchase a bowl between $10 and $30, and all the money goes to the Wayfair's house. They've done it for the past few years, and raised a very nice amount of money for them. So everyone come out, there's a lot going on, and you do have to see scarecrows. Also, I wanted to mention, for those that don't know, Elton High School Chamber Choir has been selected to perform in Disney World for their Christmas concert. Out of thousands of people, they have been chosen, but they are looking to raise funds. I think need about $7,000 to take them, so if anyone would like to know more information, you could contact me at the Alliance, and I'm gonna try and get it up on the town's website as well, or Facebook page. I've been waiting for one more piece of information, when the checks need to be announced, but it's for a great cause, and we want it on, to be chosen, a small-town school should be performing it. So.
When do they go?
I'm sorry?
May I?
It's, it's around the second week of December, I think, is where it's gonna go.
And they are doing fundraising, are they?
They are doing fundraising, but they've asked everyone to help. I've sent out press releases to the paper, and we're just trying to get it out to the community, because every little bit will help.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right.
Earl? I only had a couple of things to speak about today, but I think the name was detailed to Charlie Kitten, so I'm not getting that because I didn't read that. Um, well, the, uh, park had been utilized pretty good this year and been lucky with the weather, so I don't have anything to report there. Do you have one question about the road restoration program? I know for a couple of years now, we've been talking about the Hearthstone Drive. Is that included on that? Okay, good, I can, I can see it. I just wanted to. Okay.
Lou and Dave.
It's all good.
Earl?
I'll blow everybody's desk, a memo in reference to the school advocacy meeting that's going to be held on November, was that November? The second at Kenmore School. Uh, they're asking the town commissioners to be present, they're asking the county commissioners to be present. Uh, the school board's going to be there, um, and other officials. And I guess they want us all to come together and dialogue to see what we can do as a group to make the Cecil County Public Schools more representative in the Elton area. So, um, Mary Jo and Earl, if you let me know, I.
I am, I already know we can.
So it's all five will be going, I'll submit that, thanks.
Oh. And this, these cigarettes, getting them into the schools where I can stop them.
Yes, I think you can bring that back.
I'll bring them in, I'll be there. Um, speaking of earth restoration, can we get a, a list emailed to us? I just would like to see that list. And the other thing is, um, I know we had a wish list meeting with State Highway, I think back in the summer. And I'm just wondering if we had any feedback on sidewalk situation on North Bridge Street. Have you heard anything, has it?
Oh, you mean on, uh, the, uh,
Yeah.
Mr. Lemon's, the memorial sidewalk.
No. No.
Two thirteen?
Two thirteen, North Bridge Street.
Absolutely not, haven't heard of the.
It was on, it was, it was presented, uh, right in the city.
Sent to the district engineer.
Yeah.
State Highway works in, uh, very close and mysterious.
You know, I'm almost to the point where I want to start taking pictures of the people that are walking along that road with sometimes only a foot of, of pavement to be on. Um, especially a lot of kids. So, um, I'd like to maybe discuss it further in a workshop, see what we can do to pursue this a little more fervently. That is all.
Very good. Well, good. This is time we open up the floor for the public and I, I know that Betty had mentioned, uh, come on down and sign your name and tell us what you're here about this evening. Please give us your, uh, I got your first name, I didn't get your last name and.
Council.
And, uh, your address, please.
Well, there's a chair.
I'll pull the light to you so you can speak your hat to the public in your favor, so I'll pull it to you.
Okay, this is a new thing for me, I've never done anything like this before, but don't, please forgive me. But Sunday morning, not Sunday, Monday morning, I, I had just purchased two months ago a little nothing doll, I mean, weighed nothing, probably weighed two pounds. And I had, Monday morning, took him out, set him at my feet on, on my front porch, right at my front porch. And all of a sudden, this pit bull comes flying up the steps and grabs my dog. And my friend that I live with, Glenn, who has cancer that I take care of. I screamed, he came out. And we both proceeded to stick our hands in the dog's mouth and probably get Wilbur out of it. Well, that didn't work. So the dog basically turned on us. You know, Wilbur was dead, he threw Wilbur down when Wilbur was dead. So Glenn got beat up pretty good, I got beat up pretty good, but the only thing that helped the pit bull off of us was Glenn had a pocket knife in his pocket. And he was able to get to the pocket knife and stab the dog. And it left us alone. Well, we had the police, we had animal control there, and we had an ambulance. Glenn was in, not in very good shape because he has cancer. And, uh, the little dog's laying there, he's dead. And the reason I'm here is, why do we have pit bulls that are allowed to run loose when they're mean? This pit bull came from down the street without a baw. But I mean, I guess when the owner wanted to know where all the police and the ambulance and the animal control was at the house, he came and comes up because his dog's missing. And he proceeds to tell Glenn, you stabbed my dog. And Glenn said, well, your dog just killed our dog. So I called animal control after they left and I didn't get an answer. So I called back on Tuesday and I said, where is the dog? Because he couldn't reduce, reduce a rabies certificate, the guy couldn't. And I said, where is the dog? He says, it's at the man's house. And I said, it's at the man's house? And he said, yeah, Maryland has a one bite law.
Three. Three. Three bites, ma'am, three bites. A dog can, a dog can attack you three times viciously before they're put down.
Because I was.
Dear God. I mean, this dog, I mean, the only way Glenn was getting him off of us was his head.
And he had his ear ripped off by two dogs in there.
Did you stab him, beat him up?
I mean, that was the only thing, Glenn is very big. And I didn't know that we had a three bite law.
We do.
I just was, I tried to get my story in the Cecil way. I tried, I went Jay-Z, E, I got every word to get my story out. Because I'd never, ever want this to happen to another old lady standing in the yard with a dog because I thought I would die. Have you ever had your head in a pit bull's mouth? It's not a fun place to be. And, I mean, you can see where he bit me. But I have never been through anything like that in my entire life. And to have the pit bull right down the street in the man's backyard, ill yet. What's, what's going to keep the door, have the gate light come over the evening? And maybe that's a little, little kid standing beside me instead of a dog. I, I, I was horrified. I was horrified. And, and I still think somebody should get this out to the paper. I mean, please, please, if you have a vicious dog, keep it somewhere where it can't get out. Because I never, I've never seen anything like this ever before. And I don't want to ever go through anything like this again. I'm seventy-five years old and my friends said, you won't live to raise this puppy. So I said, I will show you, I will live to raise this puppy. I lost twenty pounds and I'm determined, I was determined to raise this puppy. But my puppy's gone. Can I keep having that? And another thing, I live over Millburn Boulevard, three oh four, and, um, this is not about Millburn, the puppy. Um, all the new houses have speed bumps. Our poor little house down here, I didn't know this, but doesn't have speed bumps, so we get all the traffic. And it goes fast. And is there any way that somebody can look at the older part of Thompson State? We need us some speed bumps in there. The little children walk to school, they cross the road.
The, uh, part of Millburn Boulevard, where it reports a county road. And while it's not within the jurisdiction of the county, the newer portion of, uh, is. So I don't know what, what portion you're looking at, but if it's in the town of Elton, we could take action. But if we have to ask the county to do it, we're not sure.
Well, I don't know if we're on a county road or what we are. All I know is the new section of Thompson State has them, they come right over the field and I go right down the field and then they go out to the.
Yeah, that's a lower part, it's a county road.
Yeah.
But we can wonder if we have, we can ask the county to look into that possibility.
And could the county also, or someone look into the drug dealing on the end of Millburn Avenue where I live? I live at three oh four Millburn Boulevard. And there's three houses there that we have five-minute pickups, in, out, gone. And if I had known this, I would have never moved there, but who knows these kind of things? There is, um, a house sits right next to us and I think there are six. Uh, and I have nothing against Mexicans or Puerto Ricans, but there's six men living there, because there's six cars out there.
If it's in the, if it's in the two hundred block, the two hundred block, uh, like Louis said, is actually out of town.
Well, I'm at three oh four.
Yeah, I know, but is it, is it closer to the two hundred block you're talking about?
Yes. It's, uh, the town village road is up from us too, you know? And that, I guess that makes it kind of bad that I'm on the half way. Yeah. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Margaret, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
We do feel.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Yes, go ahead. Your name and address, please. Yes, sir, the board is yours.
Um, my name is Dr. Bobby, just wanted to come here and say thank you so much for accommodating us for that time for giving us attention to getting compliance with all the ordinances and whatnot. You guys helped save two lives, I know, of, uh, medical emergencies that only related. And, uh, feel a lot of good for that one week or the two weeks that we actually had to get in the class. So I just want to say thank you, thank you, and you for allowing us the opportunity to get things in proper order. Um, I'm here to invite you all to a grand opening. We'd like to do a ribbon-cutting ceremony with you, if possible. We'd like to do a ribbon-cutting ceremony with you if possible. You all are welcome. We're going to get some wine, she, no, not wine, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to, we don't want to get in love with our man over there, I'm scared of that man, you know, so, you know, so we're going to have catering, you know, sandwiches, food and whatnot, you know, and, you know, I think it'll be a good opportunity for you guys to practice and have a little more time with us. You know, one of the things that we're bringing to Elton is state-of-the-art technology. One of the machines we have, it's called three D combi machine, not a dentist in Elton has it, we're the only one. It's basically, you know, the, it's a three D image that takes your face and your jaw to diagnose any sort of ulcers, vital structures, implants, you know, and I think it's a good opportunity to show that the town of Elton is growing and business is booming and, you know, we're becoming a little bit more technologically advanced and I think it's a good opportunity to, you know, let the people know, a benefit for us and you as well overall. Another thing is that, you know, I kind of want to show you guys the layout of our practice because I, last time I was here discussing, you know, public operations to some of the schools, you know, elementary schools in Cecil County, especially in Elton, to do some demonstration for these people, try to get back so that, you know, you can get a visualization, visualization of, you know, our layout and our operations and how we flow. So, you know, typically we like to hold it on a Monday where all the doctors are there and, you know, we'd like to know when the good time would be with you so we can set a date, make some flyers. We're going to invite the doctors in the building, over at the Alka Health Center as well to attend, so I think it'll be good, you know, join for everyone.
There you go. There you go.
Thank you.
You can take my card and contact me and I will work with you on the ribbon-cutting.
Thank you so much.
Get the rest of the business through.
Wonderful, yeah, and I wanted to get the chamber of commerce involved and get them all involved as well. And then just one question I actually want to ask you is, you know, I'm getting a lot of drug-seeking behavior, a lot, and, you know, I have a pretty good sense of when someone's trying to take, get one over on me and when someone's in desperate need. But I want to know, do you guys have like a drug offender registry or something like that or anything where you do criminal background checking for these people? See what's coming, nothing like that? Okay. So just pretty much go off your whim. All right. That's all I have. I don't want to take any more in time and just thank you very much again from the bottom of my heart. You guys really did some good, so thank you.
Thank you.
I am dropping back to DC, yes, tonight, but I'm in Delaware now, Monday through Wednesday, so it's not as bad.
Maybe the Cecil Wadeville store on the state of the art.
What was it called? What was the machine called?
It's called a three D combi and we also have another machine called the Sarah machine where you do like single day rounds as well, and so, you know, I can show you some pictures and, you know, she, you know, shows visual, visualize when you ask them to, you know, see what, what, you know, so absolutely.
Thank you so much.
So thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to grab that card?
Yes, ma'am. I have a wonderful life.
Thank you. Be careful getting back. We have no organized way of whoever wants to come up next, we'd raise your hand, I can kind of point to you. Come on down. Come on down, meeting ground.
It wants sign for both of us. So hello. Hi. So I'm Kalandra Coleman, the meeting room. We're the organization for homelessness. Last week we talked about shutting down all of the encampments and one of the things that you mentioned was that you would see about possible spacing for, you know, a temporary solution or whatever, and I wanted to hear your thoughts on that and just your thoughts on the process because there's not really too much of a plan for that, so we just don't want it to be something that becomes more of a problem immediately.
And just to update everyone, and this is public comment time for you to comment to us, and, but I'll be happy to meet with you afterwards.
Sure.
Because I do owe you an answer, but I will stress just for, for what you're referring to is that we had a couple Wednesdays ago, I invited sixteen organizations to come to this meeting room here, that the organizations are dedicated to help our unchallenged residents of our town of Cecil County. And during that conversation, I committed to trying to find a space that we could house maybe some of our unchallenged residents other than as the rotating shelters were working. In fact, I know the Paris Foundation even offered X amount of cots that we could use into that. Looking as we were moving forward with this, the, I've exhausted a lot of options just to answer to you, just as well as you guys have probably looked to try to find other locations that people could go when they're going to be out of the woods. And it's, we haven't taken any action at this point on what we talked about at that meeting. We're soon to start to take an action, but we haven't started or implemented any of the action that I stated in that meeting of moving forward to not only the encampments on town development property. And that is going to happen, it hasn't happened yet. So I will, I will get back to you in regards to that. I want to talk to the board a little bit more in depth to what direction they want to go with this. It's not my decision, it's a board decision, and we're truly, I know that we're bright people here, I think that we can figure out a way that we can find some answers.
So thank you for that. And my fear is that I did get an email stating that there is going to be some action next week. And so in order to sort of help everyone involved, I was hoping to get an answer for that and some other things because I'm really concerned that it could create a problem that maybe we didn't anticipate. So I'm happy to talk to you afterwards if it's better to do that.
I would say let's try to meet tomorrow. I'd be available tomorrow. I'd like to talk to the town board tonight so I can have some firm answers.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to say this evening? Seeing some new faces? Seeing none? This meeting is adjourned.